Okay, we're ready to vote. All right. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the ones that could come and those who are listening via stream. First, I want to take a roll call. And in the room, we have Councilwoman Peters, Councilman Jefferson, Councilman Moore, Councilman Hudson, Councilman Holmes, Councilman Jones, and Councilman Johnson.
There you go.
And I am Chris Williams, Mayor Pro Tem. So what I want to do is go ahead and take, that's our roll call. The mayor is out for the day, and I will be here instead. So first, before we begin, can we please stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and just as for all. All right, first up, we have Finance Committee Chair, Councilmember Moore. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Williams. Finance did meet at our regularly scheduled time. In front of you is a consent agenda, beginning with 2020-303 consecutively running down to 313. After that, the one addition was the economic ordinance was the item 2020-320. All items were explained, questions answered, so I present this consent agenda with a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilman Holmes. Is there any, are there any questions?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Williams, I do have a question. In finance, and I know you guys work with purchasing in our department, who does look at MWBE. Chairman Moore, do we ever, I guess, measure away where each of these companies are in regards to their diversity, participation on some of these contracts? Do we know that, or does the staff know that?
It is something I have mentioned to staff, and I know it's something that they look at. I think the overarching theme, especially in these times, has been that there are not near as many bids coming in as there would be in normal times. But yes, it is something staff is aware of and they look at. The overall responsibility of, I believe, of staff, and they can jump in here if they need to, is obviously to get the most efficient and effective bid, you know, for the use of our city funds. But yes, that is something that is looked at, and they do take into consideration.
Awesome. I will say, just for the record, as in the last council meeting, I made a motion that we would take this to committee to look at the MWBEs. And I think I would be remiss to not mention that the cities, I think, we haven't yet gotten to where we've gotten that right. So every day that we approve spending funding, I do believe that we're spending that funding in lack of a real policy and real process for ensuring a competitive opportunity for our entire citizenry and businesses that could serve the City of High Point. So I'm not speaking that in opposition of us approving this, but I do want to state for the record that that's where I am on this. And the sooner, I'm gonna say this like this, I don't think we could get to a good alternative for what we have now fast enough.
Okay. And I'm assuming in that, you're assuming that the numbers that were reported to us seem to be not where you want them, but you used the words "to get it right." What is right?
Yeah, so I believe those numbers that were given to us two weeks ago, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, but 1% of the contracts this year have gone to businesses owned by people of color.
Okay.
And as I understand it, we're looking at 10% as a pretty good threshold.
That's a goal.
And as a council, we all voted unanimously to continue looking at that. So that's not me saying that I'm not an approval, a vote for this, but it's just, again, staying for the record, that we cannot get to a viable method to make this work the way it needs to fast enough.
Okay. We're certainly open to continue to look at that, and we'll listen to and take any suggestions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
All right.
No, in that case, I'll just go down the road. Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Aye.
And I, Chris Williams vote, aye, and that motion passes.
That's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Next up is the Committee Development, excuse me, the Community Development Committee, and that will be myself, and the first item is 2020-314, and this is ordinance to demolition, 1519 Baker Road. Turn it over to Mr. Hux.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. We have a, okay, sorry, we have a structure located at 1519 Baker Road that we've been dealing with since January of 2019. I think the initial cause of the roof collapses is a snow load, and since then, more of the buildings collapsed. We have contacted the owner, met the owner at the facility, and we promised a permit to demolish, which never, we never got. Then we found out that a bank was about to foreclose on the property, and we dealt with the bank as well. This is, this is a frontal view of the building here, you see, and you show the rear view now. We dealt with the bank as well, and the bank really, a bank in West Virginia, they're sitting and waiting to see what the city does. That's really about where we are with this. And the building's continuing to collapse, just a visual evaluation, it looks like it's actually pulling away from a firewall now. So I don't think that this, this is going to get any better, and it is a dangerous situation. We've had one contractor look at it just for a, just for a price, to know about what the ballpark would be, and it's in the neighborhood of $125,000 to $130,000. So we're, we have, we've done our best to work with the owners to get this resolved, and it's just not getting resolved.
And your concern is danger or hazard at this point?
It is hazardous, and, you know, we've been concerned all along with that, and, you know, someone gets in this building here, they could get hurt. So we, we feel like something needs to be done with the building.
What's the, what's the size, what's the size of the lot there?
Size of the?
The property?
Uh, I'm, you know, Mr. Williams, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I need to check and see. I'm guessing about four acres, but I need to check on that.
This property's not right there at the highway, is it?
It's not far. It's not far.
Okay. And the owner is local or out of?
West Virginia.
He's out?
Elite properties.
Well, the bank's there, so we see that, but I didn't know.
It looks like in our timeline, there was an approval for demolition, then there was a 60-day extension. We got to March 7th, and we did not approve an extension, and that's when the front wall of the building collapsed, and the owner was not present for, I guess, any meetings or any requests or anything like that. I'm assuming because of COVID, we may have slowed down on what we wanted to do with that, but we were, it was like we were already gonna go ahead and demolish.
We had a request from the bank to give them 60 days, because we were hopeful that the bank would step in, take the property, and tear the building down. And what happened was, after they sent someone out, the owner denied them access to the property, they couldn't get what they needed, they just, then they stopped.
Do we have any possible recourse after the fact of getting any of this money back?
We immediately put a lien on the property. We work as fast as we can to get that done. So as soon as we bid it out, we worked with Sharon Line and Good, we get a lien on it as fast as we can. That is a concerning issue with the bank being involved with this.
Any other questions for staff?
How expensive of a demo is this, one of this size, gonna be?
We got a, we got a, just a verbal at 125,000 to 130,000.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hux.
Thank you.
Is there anybody owned or here to speak for or against this item? All right, seeing that, I will make the motion to approve the ordinance demolition of 1519 Baker Road, I mean, Road City, Council, excuse me, item 2020-314. Second. Thank you. All right, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take roll. Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Pro Tem votes, aye, and that item's passed. Next up is item 2020-31, all right, 2020-315, delegation of authority to act as certified officer, and I will turn the floor over to the mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a brief discussion. It requires us to have an up-to-date delegation of authority, so we needed to update our existing one to reflect the city manager, current city manager. So you have approved these before. It's just authorization to sign, excuse me, to sign federal documents for grants and stuff.
Any questions, staff? All right, I made the motion. Okay, I make the motion to approve item 2020-315, delegation of authority to act as certified officer.
Second.
All right. The second by who? Councilman Jefferson. So roll call, Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
And Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Pro Tem votes, aye. That motion passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to planning and development. First up is item 2020-312, National Register nomination, Melrose Hosery Mill, number one. And we will hear from David Fensel. Dislected today. Let me make a correction, that's item 321.
Okay, good evening, members of council and Mayor Pro Tem. My name's Dave Fensel with the City of High Point Planning Department and staff to the Historic Preservation Commission. For your consideration tonight and recommendation, we have a National Register nomination for the Melrose Hosery Mill, number one, located on West English Road at the intersection of Southwest Point Avenue. The area that's being proposed for National Register nomination status is a 1.4 acre parcel, as shown, outlined in red here. It's a complex of multiple buildings that developed over time that were part of the Melrose Hosery Mill. I have a few pictures to show you of the complex, and it's a variety of building types and styles. Let's quickly go through these. The, as part of the city's agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office, all National Register nominations within High Point need to, we need to provide an opportunity for public comment, and as well as consideration by both the city council and the Historic Preservation Commission. So tonight is fulfilling that requirement. Last Wednesday, the Historic Preservation Commission considered this nomination request and found that it met the evaluation criteria outlined in the National Register. There's a handout for that. And you can see, it's a variety of building styles and types. This is the old dye house. Previous picture was the knitting, knitting factory area, and then there's the commercial buildings on West English. So we are asking for, the department's asking for your recommendation on this National Register nomination. It will be forwarded, any recommendation would be forwarded to the National Register Advisory Committee of North Carolina, who's considering this request Thursday, and will be making the ultimate decision, and with their recommendation to the Park Service in Washington. I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of information in your packet regarding this nomination.
I just have a quick question. I'm sure Don Muldoon has been part of the conversations and stuff, so there won't be any restrictions that will hinder him with his goals of what he's doing there?
Sure. And this was funded, the National Register nomination was funded, funded by Cohab Space LLC. It will make this property eligible for grants that otherwise would not be available to them, and National Register status is just an honorary designation. If you do proceed with rehabilitation of the building in accordance with the Park Service, is Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, it can make those improvements eligible for some tax credits. So it's very valuable to, to business owners to pursue this.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And it, just as a reminder, I'm all, am I stumbling? Please identify yourself before you speak.
Absolutely. This is Councilman Jefferson. Just to be clear, this is the High Point Historic Preservation Commission, not the Guilford County.
That's correct. Yes, the High Point Preservation Commission. We have an agreement as a certified local government with the state that we provide an opportunity in, to the public, as well as to provide our elected officials in our preservation commission, the opportunity to weigh in on any National Register nomination applications.
And just to be clear for the people in the back, this is not a local designation. This is only the honorary National Register.
That, absolutely correct. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, David. In that case, I entertain a motion.
So move.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion? So we'll start with the roll call. Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hudson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Any Pro Tem votes?
Aye.
That motion passes. All right, next up, we're going into public hearings, and the first item here is item 2020-316, public hearing, City of High Point, George Pitts Annexation 2005. Turning it over to Herb Shannon.
This is Herb Shannon, Senior Planner with the City of High Point Planning and Development Department, and I will be providing staff presentation on the zoning-related public hearing items. The next two agenda items, Annexation Case 20-05 and Zoning Amendment 20-13 are related. Staff will provide a combined presentation. However, after your 24-hour comment, 24-hour period for public comment, and whenever you decide to take action, you would need to vote on these items separately. These cases pertain to a 15 and a half acre tract of land in the northern portion of the city's planning area. The site's located along the south side of National Service Road, approximately 200 feet east of Sandy Ridge Road. The applicant's requesting annexation and establishment of initial city zoning to have access to city utilities for an industrial use. In regards to the annexation proposal, an applicant is requesting annexation to have access to utilities. As you can see from the overhead projection, the site is generally surrounded by a city of high point. Those areas highlighted in white are lands that have been previously annexed into the city. Those areas in gray are unincorporated Guilford County. This site does abut the city limits to the north, and there are adjacent lands within the city to the east, south, and to the west. City service vehicles are already traveling in this area, and city utilities are already located in this area. Thus, this petition represents a logical progression of the city's annexation policy for this area, and the annexation of this 15 and a half acre land area would not negatively impact the city's ability to provide services for this area. As far as the zoning requests, currently this property is zoned residential, single-family 40, and agriculture on Guilford County. The applicant's requesting to establish a city of high point conditional zoning, light industrial zoning over the property. They desire to develop a major industrial service use, a specialty contractor on this site, which would include outdoor storage of geotechnical drilling equipment, trailer storage, and various outdoor storage of other related equipment. The land use plan designates this portion of the city as restricted industrial. This is a copy of the city's land use plan, adopted land use plan for this portion of the city. Everything you see highlighted in that purple designation is designated as restricted industrial by the adopted land use plan, and this land use classification's intended to accommodate office, warehouse, research and development, distribution, light manufacturing type uses. There have been a number of zonings that allow restricted industrial use types in this northern portion of the city's planning area since the 1990s. As, although this site does abut lands to the north that have, into the east that have been rezoned under the old conditional use, conditional zoning doesn't exist anymore, conditional use light industrial, those prior approvals were, they got approved at council for conditional use light industrial, but they were conditioned to meet the standards of the former Corporate Park District, which had more restrictions. The Corporate Park District no longer exists with the adoption of the current development ordinance in January of 2017. That Corporate Park District was eliminated and was replaced with the Employment Center District, which was specifically designed to, to support light industrial or limited industrial uses in the restricted industrial portion of the city. To address those concerns, the applicant has included with this request a conditional zoning ordinance to address associated concerns as far as land use policies. The primary issue pertaining to this request is the fact there's going to be quite a bit of outdoor storage, and under the Employment Center District, the intent is that all uses with that industrial use will occur inside the building, so as to eliminate any type of noise, vibration, glare, dust, impacting to adjacent properties. With the, in major industrial service use, those activities can occur outside, and to address these issues, the applicant has included conditions to, one, restrict the site to only one light industrial use. That would be the major industrial service use. All other uses would have to be those permitted in Employment Center. They've also offered a condition to restrict the location and the amount of outdoor storage, and require higher perimeter landscaping. And key items to note from the staff report are as follows. First, compatibility concerns. As I previously noted, the only LI use is the major industrial service. Any other use must be one that's permitted in Employment Center District. Far as restricting outdoor storage, the applicant has submitted this conditional zoning plan. You see the general outline of the site, but the applicant has noted this area highlighted in yellow is that will be the area where there will be outdoor storage. It's toward the rear of the site, and any outdoor storage cannot occupy more than 20% of the land area of the site. They've also offered a condition that the entire site, except for the street frontage, will have, will be surrounded by a Type A planning yard. That is the highest intensity planning yard as allowed by the City of High Point Development Ordinance. That requires an average width of 45 feet. It can be reduced to 35 feet if an opaque fence is installed of at least five feet in height, and that planning yard requires insulation of 14 trees and 33 evergreen shrubs every 100 linear feet. So they've noted that they're going to circle the site with that planning yard. Also, when you look at the length of the site, the site's about 1,300 feet deep. Where they're proposing that outdoor storage is over 650 feet from their frontage along National Service Road, to ensure that, from the street frontage, you can't see any of those outdoor activities. Also, to mitigate any type of impact to adjacent property owners, they've offered a condition that this plan will be part of their conditional zoning ordinance. The intent wasn't to show where the building's going to be up, just so here's what the outdoor storage is going to be. They've also, a key thing that we've noted is the site has some interesting attributes in that it does abut industrial zoning to the north, but in order to protect property owners to the south, there is an existing perennial stream, and we have existing stream buffer standards. So you're going to have that stream buffer now to help protect lands to the south. Also, the fact that the outdoor storage would be toward this eastern portion of the site that would protect those existing residential property owners or any future development along the frontage of the site. The final thing I would note is that as condition, the establishment of the request at CZ LI District will continue to promote the preferred development pattern, because the proposed CZ LI District does not directly front along Sandy Ridge Road all the outdoor storage to the rear, and the request is consistent with previously approved CULI zoning districts in the immediate area. The budding property to the north has CULI under the old Corporate Park, that did allow some limited outdoor storage. Same thing with this industrial park to the east under the old Corporate Park, that did allow some limited industrial, unlimited outdoor storage. So in conclusion, based upon the conditions offered by the applicant, the planning and development departments recommend approval of the zoning request. This request was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their July public hearing, and the commission recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. In conclusion, staff would note that the request is consistent with adopted policy guidance, because as condition, the request at CZ LI District meets objectives of the community growth vision statement in the land use plan, specifically protecting the appearance of property along Sandy Ridge Road, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest with the use and site conditions, the request at CZ LI District will mitigate visual impacts of potentialities and properties, and will be similar to previous light industrial zoning districts approved in this area. That is a summary of the staff review. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Herb, real quick, just wanted to make, get a piece of clarification. You just combined which items, 316 and 17?
Yes, the annexation requests, that was the first item, and conditional, the zoning map amendment, 20-13. Combined presentation, but any decision be voted on separately?
Terminology, is outdoor storage and self-storage, which we hear, is that considered the same thing?
That is completely different. This would be more of an industrial use that may be storing equipment, maybe doing some assembly or processing of equipment outside.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear to everybody.
Yeah.
Mr. Shannon, you mentioned that storage space, outdoor storage space can't exceed 20% of, I think you said, the land property size.
Yes.
What percentage would this projected outdoor storage be of that?
It's about three acres. Would the applicant's propose that in this area highlighted in yellow, they're going to have their buildings back there, their parking, I believe their, their conceptual plan notes an office building and two repair shots, but this is the only area where outdoor storage is permitted, and that can't exceed 20% of the site, so that's something that can be easily measured.
Any other questions, staff? Thank you, Mr. Shannon. At this time, I will open the public hearing portion for both items. Madam clerk, wanted to double check, have we received, I see here the comments for item 318. I didn't see the ones for 316 and 17. I didn't see the ones for three sixteen and seventeen. Have we received any public comments for those two items?
No.
All right. In accordance, and I just wanted to make sure that was cleared and heard across for those listening by string. So what we'll do is, we'll remind everyone that the public comment period remains open an additional twenty-four hours, following that, the public hearing, that the council would take final action on this matter during the adjourned session of City Council on Wednesday, August nineteenth at five thirty for both of those items.
Now, the applicant has a statement they wanted to note to council regarding this.
Oh, they did. I apologize. I guess we, I apologize for that. Is the applicant online, and we can take your statement?
This is Judy Stalder, thirty-seven, thirty-five, Admiral Drive in High Point.
All right. Go ahead.
UMA Geotechnical currently operates on a nearby property in Greensboro, and they are ready to expand their business. They're very excited to come to High Point. However, during their due diligence, they have run into a couple of issues that need to be researched further, and we ask that this request be continued to your September twenty-first meeting.
Everybody, everybody clear on that? They're requesting an extension? So I guess we need to make a motion to do that?
I'll move.
All right. Motion by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Hudson. Is there any discussion?
Question, has our public hearing been closed? I know we were doing a public hearing on this item, and we opened it, but I think we opened it ahead of hearing from Judy Stalder, and Judy's asking for a continuance. Now we're making a motion for a continuance, but the public hearing is still open.
I think the public hearing does have to be held to twenty-four hours, then it will open again.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. So I will do a roll call for the extension. Councilman Holmes?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And, for ten votes, aye. I'm going to kind of jot down here that this is an extension instead of a... All right, so the next item moving forward is item twenty-twenty-three-one-eight, public hearing, City of High Point zoning map amendment twenty-fourteen, and I turn it back over again to Herb.
Yes, this is requested by the City of High Point. Once again, this is Herb Shannon with the City of High Point Planning Department. The request by the High Point City Council to rezone approximately seven hundred thirty-three properties, totaling approximately one hundred ninety-three acres as part of the city's comprehensive zoning map amendment project. This is a multi-year project that was initiated in twenty seventeen. The purpose is to review and evaluate zoning of lands throughout the city, identify areas where zoning is out of sync or inconsistent with current land use policies, and to remove improper or obsolete zoning districts and propose appropriate changes. Now, these lands as part of round three of this comprehensive zoning map amendment project were initiated for review by City Council in October twenty nineteen. This application focuses on evaluating various townhome and multifamily developments in the northern and northwestern portion of the city's planning area. And we have a map of those areas under consideration. Map one pertains to the Saddle Brook subdivision off of Sandy Ridge Road. Map two, the Fair Oaks at Bent Tree subdivision off of Barrow Road. Map three, the Orchard Knob and the Saint Andrews subdivision off of Ski Club Road. Map four, the Deerfield subdivision off of Ski Club Road. And map five pertains to the Heritage Ridge, Ashbrook, and Hedgecock Place developments off of Hedgecock Road, and an undeveloped parcel at one thirty Hedgecock Road. The request proposes to rezone these various residential developments to remove outdated or obsolete zoning conditions. These developments were annexed and retained their current zoning between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and four under the Form Development Ordinance. At that time, there was conditional use zoning. Conditional use zoning no longer exists. The primary purpose is to remove the conditional use designation as the development conditions on these projects have been met and completed. So also to note that several of these projects at the time they were annexed were on the outer fringes of the city limits, and there are some conditions that were placed on them to ensure compatibility with adjacent lands. A lot of those fringe areas have been surrounded by other annexations of similar or high intensity, so these are no longer fringe areas of the city. I'm just going to briefly go through these various developments. This is a Saddle Brook development off of Sandy Ridge Road. This project was annexed in two thousand and four for a combination townhome and single-family development. You have this, the bulk of the property, the zone, conditional use RM five, and you have a small area to the north that's conditional use R five for single-family. This project is complete and conditions of approval have been met, so staff is recommending rezoning the conditional use or CURM five, portion is just RM five, and rezone the CUR five to just R five. It will maintain their base zoning, and this is just an aerial of that area, as you can see, that is fully developed. The next area is the Fair Oaks at Bent Tree Townhome subdivision off of Barrow Road. This subdivision was annexed and attained its zoning approval in nineteen ninety-five and developed as a twin home, townhome development. Development is complete, and they've met all their conditions, and staff is recommending rezone from the conditional use RM five to just RM, rezone to RM five. Next is the Orchard Knob and the Saint Andrews developments off of Ski Club Road. The, they were, I think, believe, just checking my notes, Orchard Knob was annexed in nineteen ninety-nine, Saint Andrews in two thousand, they both received zoning of conditional use RM five. They each had their respective conditions. This development has, both developments have been completed, they've met those conditions, and the proposal is to rezone this to just RM five. I would note, staff did receive a last-minute citizen's inquiry about this property. There was a property owner along Kim Drive to the south, and he had some questions regarding activity at the rear of the property. Staff has reached out to this property owner because he didn't really say what his issues were. He just said he had some questions. So we're attempting to get in contact with him, but there is a little sliver of land associated to, with that development, and that's basically just open space that's part of that development. Next is the Deerfield Townhome subdivision along Ski Club Road. This property was annexed in nineteen ninety-six and developed as a townhome development. It has been fully completed, and they met all the conditions. The staff is recommending rezoning from the conditional use RM five to the RM five district. And finally, there's four areas along Hedgecock Road. If you're familiar with this area, this is the Philip Sock Complex, and you have the Heritage Ridge, Ashbrook Place, and Hedgecock Place development. The, all of those were granted conditional use residential multifamily sixteen zoning. All of these developments are complete, they've met all the conditions, so staff is recommending rezoning to the RM sixteen district. Heritage Ridge and Ashbrook Place developed as a townhome development. Hedgecock Place developed as a multifamily development. And there's a, one final area, the parcel at one thirty Hedgecock Road. This property was intended to be a part of the adjacent Mason Manor apartment complex, which is off of North Gate Court. It was rezoned to the current conditional use RM sixteen district in two thousand and two. The intent was for that land area to include an additional apartment building for that development. To date, that additional structure has not developed, but there was a condition placed on it that there be no access from Hedgecock Road to ensure compatibility of those single-family homes on Hedgecock Road. The new development ordinance now has a requirement that you cannot access multifamily through single-family, so that condition is no longer required. So staff is recommending rezoning to the RM sixteen district for that site. There was also a public comment submitted from a property owner off of Chase Court. He had concerns that the proposed rezoning would negatively impact the development. Staff will reach out to that property owner to make sure he fully understands this proposal. I would note, staff received about eighty-five to ninety phone calls regarding these developments. Almost all of the people we contacted, once we explained what was going on, had no objections to it. The primary questions were, is this changing the use of development? No, you're fully developed, you're going to stay as is. There were questions, will this impact my HOA rules? No, that homeowners association governs the HOA rules. The city does not regulate homeowners association rules. Is this part of any new development? No, this is not associated with any new development, it's administrative cleanup. There were questions, will this zoning change the zoning on adjacent properties? No, it's just for those specific subdivisions. Several people wanted to know, will this annex any adjacent property? We told them, no, this is not associated with any annexation. We had a few people that want to know, will this increase their taxes? No, their use of their property is staying the same. Several people had concerns about school districts, will this rezoning impact the school district or change the school district that their children go to, the school the children go to? No, zoning does not have anything to do with the school district, and there were several people that had concerns with the part of any street widening, and no, this has nothing to do with any associated street widening. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their June, I'm sorry, July public hearing, and recommended approval of this request by a vote of eight to zero, and they determined that the request is consistent without the policy guidance, because the proposed zoning map amendments are supported by various land use designations for these areas as contained by the adopted land use plan, and the request is reasonable in the public interest, because the amendments are needed to remove unnecessary restrictions on the properties to, and to remove outdated conditional zoning. Finally, I would note that later this afternoon, there was a request received from the HOA president of the Saddle Brook development. Staff has reached out to this person, and they had some questions that landscaping and fencing conditions have not been met. I have reached out to them to try and find specifically where they're referring to. To the best of our knowledge, all landscaping and fencing conditions were met, and that developer from fourteen years ago has retired, so he's no longer in business. But we will attempt to talk with that property owner or that HOA president to find out specifically what their concerns are about fencing and landscaping for that development. That is a brief summary of this round of the comprehensive zoning map amendment project. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Shannon, is there any questions for staff?
I did, I'll just say on that one, HOA president, I looked at that too, and was asking staff about that, and it looked like he had some requirements, not requirements, there were some questions about some of the inner development and occupancies on it, so I'm sure you'll address that too.
Okay.
That was Councilmember Moore.
Oh, thank, yes, sorry.
So in that case, I'll open up the public hearing portion of this, and we received four from Danny Van Camp, Mr. Ruin, saying that correctly, Ann Dawson, Runyon, thank you, and Michael E. Scott. So, Madam Clerk, have we received any additional comments past these? So in that case, I will, once again, remind everyone that the public comment period will remain open for an additional twenty-four hours, twenty-four hour period following the public hearing, that the council will take final action on this matter during an adjourned session of City Council on Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, five thirty. So, next up, we're moving on to general business, and looks like we've got some minutes to approve. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, minutes.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hudson, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussions? All right, so roll call, there we go. Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
For ten votes, aye. That motion passes. Their motion to adjourn.
Mayor Proton, I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules to add an agenda to the item regarding street murals.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so there's a motion by Councilman Jefferson, seconded by Councilman Holmes. You want to go ahead and lay in a discussion to that item?
The, it's a motion to suspend rules to add the agenda for discussion, because I'm going to make a motion that I'm sending to committee for further, so.
Is there any, any discussion on that motion to suspend the rules? All right, so I will take the roll call for that. That'd be Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
And Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Councilman Williams, votes aye. So if you would, Councilman Jefferson?
Thank you, Mayor Proton, and fellow council members. In regards to what's been happening lately, there have been a number of cities and communities who have embraced the opportunity to do a street mural as possible. It's been requested by a number of residents and leaders here in our city that we consider doing the same thing, and at this point, for us to do that, I think lawfully, there needs to be a governmental process for us to consider that. So I'm actually making a motion that we take this specific item to Prosperity and Livability Committee to be able to discuss this item a little bit further.
You don't need to make a motion to do that.
I'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
You just put that in the committee agenda.
Well, but in the same note, I want to ask Madam Attorney if she would address the ordinance that we passed just a couple of years ago when it came to street.
This is something that has come up for discussion. The mayor and I, we have a lot of discussions, we've had some ongoing talks about this. We've got right now a policy with regards to painting in residential streets, and we also have another policy about government speech, which is what this would be considered. So I know the mayor will have some individuals that are very critical of that. I think, you know, it is necessary and very important to have a policy and procedure that everybody's treated equally, and that whatever language is requested be painted, that it's thoroughly done, and that it is deemed government speech.
And I'll kind of, hopefully shed a little bit of light on it. If memory serves me correct, the mayor went to a convention or visited a city, maybe in Portland?
One.
Yeah, and then while he was there, he saw an example of this, and we kind of went through this whole process to come up with the two ordinances, because it was a great idea for the residential pieces, and a lot of it was more of art-connected stuff, not about speech and so forth, just mostly art and decoration and so forth, but we wanted to make sure that, and if I'm speaking out of turn, you know, you can just feel free to just give me the hand sign, and I'll let you be quiet. The question is, when you have, when you present a speech on one, on an item, that if you allow one, you have to allow the other. And that's, and that's possibly a pocket issue that some of the cities that have gone forward and done that, they haven't hit this part yet, that that item may come back up, or that you may have a counter that requests to put the same, you know, I won't go into details, but hopefully you get an idea of what I'm saying, that that might present an issue that we will have to deal with. But I think a lot of that can be best addressed by the mayor within the P and L, and I think that, that'd be great.
And if I can clarify, I think one of the reasons why the motion was for council to consider it going to an actual committee for further discussion is that there are the ordinances around this, and that there is so much around us doing this the right way, that it is going to require a process that may be outside of the already determined ordinances that we have, so.
We definitely want to make sure that we don't conflict with those. And then in addition to that, I mean, it's a different atmosphere in which we're working right now. You may see some cities that have already done it, and you think, oh, well, everything is good to go, they're doing it, but I will tell you now, to echo what the pro team said, some of those cities might see some of that to come back, because they didn't actually set up a process before, they just went ahead, kind of a knee-jerk reaction did it. So there's some right ways to do it, are there pitfalls, perhaps, but there is with most of them.
Yeah, so.
But I think bringing it to a committee will help us figure that out.
Yeah.
And again, this is the motion to set up the process, not the motion to consider just a street mural project. It's a motion to set up the process for doing it outside of what we already have established.
In addition to what we, okay.
Yeah. Yes, please, please correct what I'm saying.
I know. I might suggest the wording is that you're requesting that it go to a committee, P and L, so that that committee can determine whether or not it is unwill sent by City Council to proceed in setting up a procedure for it if it's something that the council wants to do.
So this wouldn't be a motion that council would vote on anyway, we're just asking P and L to discuss this on their agenda.
I mean, this is Councilman Hudson, that's, I mean, that, that's the, yeah, it's the, I mean, it is the prerogative of the chair of the committee to put whatever agenda items they want on, so that, I mean, that's fine. I'm happy to put this on that agenda.
Certainly a proper way to say it.
Yes, absolutely. And I'll also say that the, what we have now specifically says, no language. It is residential only, it is non-representational art that is not advertising, no, no language, which specifically is to address what our city attorney said. If we, if we accept some language, that means we have to accept all language. We cannot.
You have to deem it 100% government speech.
Correct.
That's a, that's a big decision for the council for that, because you want to make it, you know, vet it well, and then it's not challenged.
Yep. But I'm happy to put it on the agenda.
Absolutely, thank you.
Definitely needs to be discussed in P and L. So how do you want to handle this, Councilman Jefferson?
Well, it sounded like I started a motion, do I just need to, for the record, recant that or withdraw the motion?
The board, you've got it on the agenda now, I would go ahead and have a very, have a sense of the agenda.
So he's recanting the motion?
Well, because it didn't need to be a motion.
Okay. We need to vote on and recant.
Well then, wasn't that motion?
No motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so once again, I will go back with that, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, so motion by Councilman Holmes, seconded by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion, anything else? All right. Councilman Holmes?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
And Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
For 10 votes, aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you.